Well, good evening and welcome to our special candidate forum. I'm Judy Stiles from KGCSTV. And tonight, we have a program featuring the races for the Joplin City Council that will be on the April 3 ballot. I thank the candidates for joining me this evening, and it'll be a chance for you, the voters, to hear from them as we go throughout the evening. We have five seats to be filled, and you'll hear what people have to say this evening. We're scheduled to last 90 minutes, so you, the voters, have a chance to hear from the candidates in one setting. Our format tonight is going to be a question-and-answer type of format, where each person will have one minute to respond to the questions that are asked. We're going to start, however, by giving each candidate a chance to introduce him or herself to you, an opening statement. I will have one minute for the candidates. They have a light system that will let them know how time is going, and I will also remind you if you go beyond the time. So we'll start with beginning introductions, and I think I'm going to start my right this time. We'll alternate as we go along, but we'll start at the end with Mr. Urie.
Well, my name is Steve Urie. I'm running for a general seat. I decided to run actually over coffee with friends, met with three different age groups, and they helped me plan the campaign and the objectives, and so that's what we came up with. I'm a retired nurse and a retired pastor. My nursing career, I was a troubleshooter for departments that were having budget issues. I also have found many years that I've been in churches that we had to go in and wrap up and get them so they could survive. So I've had a lot of budget experience.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Mr. Stanley.
My name is Ryan Stanley, and I'm running for a general seat. I am now just finishing up my first term on city council currently and wanting and wishing and hoping to be reelected. I am a third-generation Joplinite, married to another third-generation Joplinite, and we're raising our fourth generation here in this great city. And I feel like I add a voice to council. I think I can speak well to budgetary issues, which I think is going to be the topic of the next couple of years with being a financial advisor here in town, and certainly have a big heart for serving the community, and I think I can add a lot of weight.
Thank you very much.
I'm Gary Shaw. I'm presently the council member for Zone 1 and running again for Zone 1. I'm running again because I enjoy serving the people. I've been on several different committees and commissions and different things, and it's a pleasure to me to be able to help folks and help them get what they need. I have been on the council for 16 years, and the reason I'm running again is I had some folks ask me to, and I just think there's some things that we've started that I'd like to have a part in finishing. And I think that perhaps I'm the only one, the candidate here tonight, that Judy Stiles has written a poem about.
Another story.
My name is Diane Reed Adams, and I'm running for the Zone 4 seat. I think I'm well-qualified for it. I'm a retired university professor of American history, having taught at Missouri State, Missouri Southern, and University of Missouri-Kansas City. My doctoral dissertation was written on economic development, and I was on the team that wrote the government exam that all Missouri high school students have to take. In addition to the educational world, I spent 15 years in the business world. I was the first female member of the Joplin New Car Dealers Association back in the '70s with my dad, Fred Reed, who was on the council 50 years ago. So I'm hoping to follow in his footsteps and be a new voice, because I've never run for public office before, and I would like to represent all of the citizens of Joplin. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and thank you for your 32 years of doing this. Thank you to the city for hosting this. I see a lot of city staff, city workers here. I'm so thankful you all are all here. I am thankful that everyone at home is watching, because you're the reason democracy works is being involved in making decisions that affect us locally, because the local decisions are the ones that tend to matter the most. My name's Anthony Mottleyon. I'm 31. I've been a resident of Joplin my entire life. I'm running to give people the option of just positive growth and positive change for our city. We have amazing opportunities for growth here in town, and there's a, we're still working on revitalization after the tornado, and we can get it done, and I want to be a part of that and help move us all forward together.
My left or your right?
I'm Doug Lawson, born and raised in Joplin, Missouri, as was my wife. Graduated from Joplin Senior High School, graduated from Missouri Southern, then went to some more schooling and the United States Navy, which took 30 years of my time. And at the end of that career, my wife and I both wanted to come home, and Joplin is home. We've been all over the world, literally, some of the biggest cities in the United States, and Joplin is our favorite town, and this is where we want to live and to be a part of, and thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Harvey Hutchinson. I've lived here about 10 years. I've sought the office before. Since 2012, I've served on the Parks and Rec Board. Since 2014, I've served on the capital sales tax. I understand, yes, budget money has got, in every organization, money is always a problem, no matter what it is, whether it's your family, your church, or government, or anything in between. Been a business consultant, international, all over the world for the last 40 years. I believe I can bring that to the council. My real concerns, the number-one reason for having a city council, or any city, is for law enforcement and fire protection, and I support them to the fullest. Couple more concerns that I have, I would never want to see this city become a refugee center for anything like that, or never ever see it become a sanctuary city, if that ever would be. I would fight that to the fullest, I would die across my cold, dead body for that. And I would also guard against any other Wallace-Blythe, I know Wallace-Blythe is dead, but if anything like that comes up again, although I'm all for business growth, and I want to do everything I can to bring in more business, and I think that's the way to grow our taxes.
Very much.
My name is Morris Glaze. I was born and raised in Carthage, Missouri, went in the U.S. Navy, got discharged and moved to Joplin, and I answered that, and the Joplin Globe said, "Truck line, part-time typing." I qualified. I got the job and spent 42 years in the freight industry. Just recently retired, January the 2nd. I also have 10 years' experience on city council, 2006 through 2016. I was appointed in 2006 for a two-year term, and then won two elections in 2008 and 2012. I recently was the mayor pro temp, 2014 and 2016. I was watching the baseball, or basketball game yesterday, and I wrote down all the boards and commissions I used to be on to make sure, you know, I'm qualified. I've been on the nature center board, museum board, was the first chairman of the Newman Innovation Center, Chamber of Commerce Board, 2000 to 2008, Chamber Executive Board, Chamber Five Star Reaccreditation Chairman, Leadership Joplin Class, 1997, Police Citizens Academy Class, remember, I took that with my wife, Joplin Redevelopment Committee, Region M Solid Waste Board, Joplin Industrial Development Authority, 1995 to 2006, as a past president, Joplin City Council, 2006 to 2016, and mayor pro temp, 2014, 2016. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, my name is Joshua Bard, and I'm running for a general seat. I haven't been on that many boards and commissions, but I have been on the Capital Improvement and Public Safety Committee for the last couple of years. I also sit on the TIF Committee. I have, I grew up in this city. I love this city, and I hope to represent this city. My wife has, she grew up in this city as well. That's it, that's what I got.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're going to turn now to the questions section of our program. Each candidate has one minute to answer, and I know sometimes it's going to be hard to condense your answers to one minute to allow a number of topics to be covered. That's what we're trying to do this evening. We're going to start off, as some of you mentioned, budget being a concern for the city, one of the biggest challenges perhaps facing the city council. I'd like each person to share your thoughts on how you feel the city council should deal with declining sales tax revenues and increased needs for funding of projects and salaries in the city. And I'll start off with Mr. Stanley this time.
Thank you, Judy. I think it's fair to say, and I think it's common knowledge, that we're concerned about the compensation for our workforce, both within police and fire, but also we have some other positions that have been hard to recruit for because of our wages are not as competitive as we would like them to be. We have major issues financially, and I think it's going to take a lot of discussion as a council and also with the staff. I think we have a great city staff that can help guide us through that. And at the end of the day, I think we're going to either have choices where we can really cut ourselves down to a balanced budget and try to keep the quality of life that we might, try to hang on to the quality of life, or we can start looking at our funding opportunities and looking to expand those. And I really want to look at our funding opportunities at different sales taxes to different property taxes, to look at how to try to make sure our revenue grows in compensation and in reflection to our expenses.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Judy, I think, you know, for a number of years, we've been recovering from the tornado. We've been spending all of our efforts on that and spending the federal money that we've got and everything. I think it's now time for us, and I know our staff's been working on it, we're working on priority-based budgeting, and I think it's going to give us an opportunity. We've already looked at it. It's time for us to put that in place, and I think that's going to help us to make some decisions, to prioritize things and to, we're going to have to do some cuts and make some adjustments, but I think it's, and I think it's time for us to do that, and I think we're ready to do that. I also think that we're in a position, we're seeing some new developers come into town. I think to, it's important that we attract all the retail that we can. I'd rather have people spending money and us making money on taxes rather than having taxing the people. So that's basically where I see us spending our efforts.
Continue working our way around. Your response, Diane?
I agree with a lot of what Mr. Shaw said. I think we have to focus on the priority-based budgeting, but I also think that we must do an extensive study of cities of comparable size throughout all departments and see what they are paying those employees, those department heads, and then see where we can make cuts. Now, we are going to have to fund the police and fire. There should be ways to do that. I think there are emergency measures that can do it for this year, but we're going to have to have some new revenue sources, such as use tax, sales tax, and I think there's a use tax committee working on that study right now. I think when we get all of that information compiled, we'll have to make some difficult decisions. But I think the important thing for the long term is to get more tourism dollars in.
Thank you.
No one likes taxes. No one likes the idea of raising taxes. Is it on the table? I think it's going to have to be for the upcoming council to make those decisions, to figure out how to effectively grow our town. But we need to remember that it's not just the council and city staff. We also have the people, because if we are going to have a use tax or raise property taxes, they're the ones, the people that vote that ultimately make those decisions. So we need to make sure that we're inclusive and we're having those conversations, that everyone's involved and everyone has a chance to participate. If it's up to me, I would prefer not to see one single program cut, and I wouldn't want to see one single city staff member eliminated. If you pay good people good wages, they're going to stay, and they're going to help grow your city. So I really hope we can come up with some solutions that are going to maintain the quality of life we have while still allowing for growth in the future.
Thank you. For the viewers, a reminder, the question we're discussing deals with how your thoughts about the city's budget challenges, declining sales tax revenue and increased needs for more funding. So, Mr. Ward?
Thank you. I think it's important that we continue to look at every program, every project that the city's involved in, to determine, is this something that needs to continue, or is this something that it's time to say goodbye to? Obviously, every year, there's some new wonderful program that we want to start. We need to look at those programs. Is this something that's going to grow our city? Is this something ultimately that's going to cause the city to have more income? It's possible to invest in things that appreciate, and that's what we should do. Taxes, along with every other person sitting up here, I don't like taxes either, but we're going to have to look at those and see how best to use the taxes that we may get. And ultimately, what's going to grow our city and grow the income of the city is being the kind of city that people want to live in, people want to move to, and I want to see a city that's inviting to the surrounding communities and indeed, the whole community.
Thank you.
Having sat on the capital sales tax oversight since 2014, I'm very, very cocked about it. We have an excellent finance director here who can tell you what are the problems is. Joplin, as you all know, for the last 80 years, has been a sales tax center. In other words, people came from all around to do their shopping on Saturday afternoon, and we kept the money. But now that's gone. People don't do that anymore, and more and more is being bought online. Now, when the state wrote the law, they sloppily wrote it, and we don't get our share of that sales tax. So that's why we're going to have to put a use tax in, even though it's very burdensome on businesses to deal with it. We need it in order just to recapture that revenue that we're losing right now through the online sales. Every year, more and more people buy more online, and now, interesting, ironic thing, the state gets theirs, but the counties and the cities don't. So that's why it's going to have to be put back in. I did say, if you read in the paper, that we would put a five-year sunset on it, so it doesn't go forever, but, and long enough, and hopefully by then, the feds and the state will get it straightened out and figure out, and we won't lose that money. However, there is one problem we're always going to have, and that is that where we used to get money out of Neosho and Miami and all these, we're not going to get it. If they buy online, it's going to stay in Neosho, so, but at least we can keep our own Joplin money. That's a problem. Real, real problem on our own.
Your minute is up, so I'd hate to cut you, people off, but we keep everybody within the timeframe, so, okay. Mr. Glaze?
Well, thank you. I've gone through 10 budgets prior on city council. They're all been stressed, and the new council will be facing priority budgeting. Private industries use priority budgeting for a number of years. My main goal and concern is keeping the employees we got, their most valuable asset we have as a city, our current employment, and also addressing those shortfalls we have in wages that are found in the step plan. So the council will be charged, looking at step plan and making adjustments there where needed, not only for fire and police, but equipment operators. We have some other hard-to-fill positions, and we have some positions that we lose to local recruiting, so that will be facing the new council once they're seated in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
You know, I think there's certain steps that need to be made as far as, before we do any use tax or anything like that, I think the priority-based budget needs to be the top priority as far as breaking down what cuts need to be made, what other revenue can be generated from that budget. And then, of course, going into the property tax, I think that the property tax probably should be looked at before a use tax needs to come around, but we are definitely facing challenges as far as the city goes with money, but the priority-based budget definitely needs to be the top priority with that.
Thank you. And Mr. Urie?
Clearly, budgets are difficult, but I believe that the priority-based budget is an absolute necessity. I think we can look at things like our individual departments, and sometimes you have to take small steps, so if they don't work, it's a little boo-boo, where if you make a big decision and take a large step, you end up with a catastrophe. We can do some small things with even our city's staff. We can cross-train our clerks from one department to another, so that if one department's not busy, then it's time to have somebody else come over and send them over to work there. The other thing is that we can do things like put in an electronic payroll system, and that would just be one of the ways to help cut expenses for that department.
Next question ties into something that you've all kind of addressed, the priority-based budgeting. If a voter comes up to you and says, "What is your feeling about the different services or departments? What do you list as a must-have area?" And then maybe which ones are, under the microscope, are questionable. You've been following the issues of budgets, so in your opinion, you know, if you have to prioritize the services the city provides, what's a must-have, and then maybe what's one that maybe we need to look at? Are you able to address that type of question? Mr. Shaw?
All right, thank you, Judy. I think, you know, priority budget, I don't know that there's a lot of things that we can totally do away with. I mean, we need police, we need fire. My house is on fire. I want the firemen, if the police, if somebody's coming in my door, I want the police. But also, I want my toilets to flush, and I want my streets to be paved and all that kind of thing. So I don't know that there's a lot of cutting out we could do, but I think there's ways that we can look at, are we doing it the best way that we can do it? There might even be some areas, certainly police and fire doesn't fall in, but there might be some areas to where it might be cheaper for us to outsource some of the work instead of trying to do it all ourselves. So I think that's what priority budget's going to do, is going to help us to look a little closer at each item that we are doing and see if we need to make some changes and maybe allow somebody else to help us do that.
Thoughts on the priority budgeting?
My absolute number-one priority is public safety. I think that if people or businesses are going to be looking at coming into Joplin, they need to be assured that they are safe in their person and property. Therefore, our police and fire need to be at the very top of the list. Then other things like infrastructure, like the streets and the sewers that were mentioned, but let's make public safety a priority and let people know that they are secure here when they come here to live or when they come here to visit. And then I think the priority-based budgeting will allow us to investigate on down the line. Thank you.
Your feelings, then?
Priority-based budgeting is going to be a new thing for Joplin, and changing to it from our existing budget structure carries some substantial rewards if we reap them properly. It also carries risk. Each time you change a system, each system involves risk. We're going to be accepting and bringing in a whole new system of risks that, I'm not sure if we've explored them fully and properly to understand what this system actually will do to us. That said, regardless of what budget structure we use, whether it's what we have or the new priority-based system, the number-one concern for me is public safety. If we're not taking care of people to be secure in their possessions, in their homes, their right to life, then we fail the city. So first and foremost, we have to make sure that our police and fire are paid appropriately.
Continue with the question of priority-based budgeting and must-haves and what might be worth examining.
The people that I talk to typically, their concern is firefighters and police officers in Joplin. That's just a major concern of the community. And I agree with everybody else that safety, public safety, is extremely important. I also talk to people that are concerned about what they see as indiscriminate building of sidewalks and rebuilding of streets that they just built a year ago. There's reasons that we're doing those things, and they're good reasons. Maybe we need to look at them a little bit closer before we start something, so we don't do two things in a row when we could have done them all at once. Infrastructure, though, is important. We talk about millions of dollars of infrastructure that needs to be done in the future, and I'd rather do it now than have to wait. But again, it comes back to budget. And, okay.
Thank you.
Well, I was delighted to see when the city manager came up with the concept of priority-based budgeting. I haven't been a business consultant. I've done budgets every kind of way, and yesterday, and it's always, over the years, people would just add 8% for inflation and keep going, instead of looking at things that maybe you could get rid of. On the other hand, maybe you need to add some more things new. Obviously, the most important thing in our budget, this whole city exists for is safety, fire, and then police. Our police have a pretty fair starting salary, but what happens is, as it goes on up, they start falling behind, and that's why we're becoming a farm club for Dallas and Kansas City and St. Louis, and that's got to stop. We have to raise those positions so that people are happy to live here and they don't get plucked off. And that, and obviously, quality of life is very important. I've served on the parks board, and if we don't have the right kind of parks and structure and quality of life here, we're not going to get that new industry, and the industry is the only way to get the rooftops and then get the sales tax and the revenues up in order to, along with maybe annexing a few of the smaller cities around here.
Thank you. Mr. Glaze?
Well, I'm also concerned about public safety. I've been made well aware of it through the media and the press and talking to citizens, but I'm also concerned about infrastructure. I mean, during the rebuild for Joplin, since the tornado, most of that money went for the rebuilding of infrastructure. If you look at the budget this year, the last five years' budgets, a lot of money went into infrastructure, repair the damage from the recovery from the tornado that the debris trucks caused, and so I want to look at that too in the budget process. I'm excited that council's going to be involved, looking at all the services that we offer and measuring their value to the citizens and making those decisions if they continue to be funded or not. I think that's a challenge for all of us, and thank you very much.
Sustainability, of course, is the number-one priority there as far as infrastructure goes. Public safety is my number-one. The fire and police departments definitely need to have their retention saved as far as that goes. The Parks and Rec would be the magnifying glass as far as the department that would be looked at closely. You know, you can go out to Shepherd Decker and play 18 holes of golf for $18 when it could be $27 and actually starting to make a little money.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Urie?
Priority-based budgeting does work. I've lived in two cities that have done it. It does have its risks, there are concerns with it. My first priority is our public safety departments, and it's gone on too long, the discussion, why we can't, where do we find the funding, and it's time to actually make a decision and protect our police and fire departments, get their pay and wage scale up where it belongs and keep it there. I think it's also important that we recognize that all of our employees for the city are precious to us, and they are the first line that people see that make a difference in the city.
Sure. Thank you. Priority-based budgeting has been something that council has been working with and through for the last couple of years, and I'm looking forward to our next budget session, because I do think that we're actually going to start seeing some fruits from all the labor that we put in for years on trying to figure out what are the priorities. Any budget, you're going to have the have-tos that we have to pay for, and I would put police and fire in there. I would put public works, certainly want the sewers to work. I think that's important to people. Then we have our should-dos and then our wants or want-to-dos, and quality of life always, it ends up in that bucket, because it's not a have-to. I really don't want to create a city that is so focused on the have-tos that we get and start cutting in hard into the quality of life. I think we have to look at our funding opportunities and explore those fully. Hard cuts might need to be made, and if we need to do that, I'm fine to do that, but at the end of the day, I also want to take a look, hard look at revenue.
Thank you. Next question, some of you touched on, the development, redevelopment after the tornado. Joplin's approaching the end of the timetable for completing projects within the next year or so for federally-funded, state-funded projects. What do you see as continuing needs in the area that was affected by the tornado? After that federal-state money that was gone, and what projects do you see as still needed in that part of town?
Thank you. I think we need to look again at infrastructure, make sure that all of those spaces are covered before we run out of funding. We need to look at sidewalks and some landscaping, something to make our city attractive. If we have the funds to do it, let's use a little bit of that money on the tail end to make us a very attractive city, pretty, plant some more trees or create something that would draw people in to see our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we've done a good job with the money that we were given by the federal and state government to rebuild most of our damaged sections. I know we have, I personally benefited. I own a home in the tornado zone. I was able to take advantage of the J-HAP program to get some money to live there. I think that's done a lot of good for a lot of homeowners, given some young folks like myself a chance to get started in life, so I'm very thankful for that. We can continue to move forward after this money that we've been given goes away. We're going to have to deal with things ourselves, so we can make those small amenity improvements, you know, complete streets, landscaping, trees, but we also have to remember in that area, we have 20th Street, and we have a lot of business opportunities. There's still a lot of empty land there, and I think we should really focus on doing as much as we can to get businesses into that portion of town. That way, we can raise some revenue.
Thank you.
I think we have done a good job using federal funding to repair our city, and I would like to see us take care of the rest of the city.
Your answer for that?
That's my answer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, well, we had Yes, well, like, I think 113 million, we're about to run out of that, of course, and used it pretty well. And we do need sidewalks in certain places. We need bike trails, and we've done a real good job working through the parks and rec to make the quality of life here better so we can attract more new industry, more new people, which will grow our base and grow our quality of life here. There's a, I also, besides the boards that served on the early digits of 2022, and a couple of things that were determined at that time, identified the need to be done. We need an indoor arena here. We do a great job attracting youth sports in the summer times with our JAC. Except, and this is something that the city won't do, is so much as foster and be a template for it. It's going to be private enterprise. The hotel industry has, of course, got to get the convention center back. We need about 100,000 feet of floor space for exhibits. All these things are going to make us money, but we also need some kind of way to get an indoor arena, to get the volleyball tournaments to come in from Wichita and all these places, and basketball, which we can.
Well, Judy, getting back to your question, what you're going to find in the new budgets is operational costs and reoccurring costs. We'll take Mercy Park, for example. We had the money to build it. Now, we've got to find the money to maintain it and staff it as we go forward in our history and the life of the city. We just, and congratulations to the city council. I think Main Street redo from 32nd down to 15th Street is a good example of well-spent money. But unfortunately, we laid asphalt. Asphalt has a lifespan of eight to 10 years, so some council of eight to 10 years is going to have to come up with the money to replace the asphalt we just laid this last winter because it does wear out. So there is reoccurring costs appearing in the budget, and we'll have to address those issues and also operational costs. Thank you.
Mr..
I think it goes back to the sustainability after the fact. We do, the money that we've used so far is, Joplin is, it looks gorgeous in the tornado areas. I think that the 32nd Street to 44th over to Range Line corridor is going to be built up, and I think that's going to be a huge impact on our community. But like 10th Street to Maiden Lane, around that area, we just recently redid that, and it's already gone to a washboard status if you drive over it. Looking closely at those things, like Morris said, the lifespan of certain areas and certain things need to be closely looked at and monitored as far as that goes.
Thank you. Turn to the other side again.
We've made great strides since the tornado, but we still have work to do. And infrastructure in that area is still important and still has things that need work. One of the things that we need to look at is, while we're taking care of infrastructure, we need not to hurt our businesses. There was some work done on 20th and Main that actually closed one of our small businesses. I shop there. Actually, every access to that shop was blocked during the street repair, and she had to go ahead and close. So I think we need to be very careful when we're doing our infrastructure that we don't hurt our economy with our small businesses.
Judy, could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I get it.
We're approaching the end of the timetable for completing projects for federal and state funding with new projects in the near future. What do you feel is continuing development needs in the area affected by the tornado?
On the tornado effect here, okay. I really would like to see us take the land that JRC owns now and get very proactive at how we can get private developers to see and help coach that vision. The city owns some prime real estate, or the JRC, through the city owns some prime real estate, all through the tornado-affected area, and I would love to see that get developed in the next couple of years. We just had a groundbreaking four memorial hills, which is a Kevin Parker development that was with JRC land. That's going to be phenomenal, and I would like to go to more ground breakings in that area. I'd also like us to take the trail system that we're interweaving and expand that out in more veins going out into the community, but mainly just to use that money we've spent in the tornado-affected area to use it as a catalyst for development out, to radiate out to the rest of the city.
Mr..
I agree with Ryan, the area that we have that's available for construction and development, we need to emphasize on that. You know, our city, a few days ago, just celebrated 145th birthday, and we have a lot of water pipes and sewers and everything that are 100 years old. And the tornado was a terrible tragedy for us, but it did, we've been able to start a process that we needed to take care of, and so we're going to have to finish that process. We have some, a lot of infrastructure in place in that area, but that area, the things that come from that area have to go through other pipes and other things to get where they go, and so we're going to have to put some emphasis on that. And I think that it's, that the, our staff has done an outstanding job of spending the money we have and help us to prepare for the future, to be able to take care of the needs that we have in the days ahead.
Next question ties into a recent council meeting when there was a presentation regarding a tourism study and the results. One of the recommendations was a need for a building to house a conference center as well as other topics of interest related to tourism in Joplin. So if you were asked by a voter, you know, what do you think Joplin needs to do related to this tourism study or the future of tourism in the city, what would you say?
I was happy that we got the tourism study done, showed some interesting aspects of potentials for growth. But let's not forget that also Vision 2022 kind of conducted their own informal tourism study and identified the need for a sports complex in town that could host basketball, volleyball, those off, indoor activities that when you can't be outdoors. So we have some decisions we need to make as far as which way we want to go, and I'm looking forward to speaking with staff, speaking with our hotelers, with Joplin Sports Authority, and just really digging into that and seeing which direction truly is the best option.
Thank you.
I agree. We need convention center or a place where we can have larger events than we have now that they've closed the one down south of the city. We need more of those. I wish we had a venue that would accommodate 2,000 people, that we could have a Broadway play or something, you know, on multiple nights, where people from Tulsa and Springfield and Kansas City would come to Joplin instead of us having to go there. But the question is always, how are you going to pay for it? That being said, if we develop those resources, they will pay for themselves over time. So I think we need to definitely give a good look at all of these possible accommodations for events.
Mr.. Hutchinson?
Yes, I've been involved in all those things. I was on 2022. I think I mentioned that about the strong need for the indoor sports facility for youth. What we can't have is another Joe Becker Stadium, though. I mean, what we've got to do is provide a template, and I mean, Joe Becker and the fact that we just financed a worthless baseball team. What we have to do is provide and let private enterprise do that. As far as the tourism, whatever we have to do to work with them to get the hotel industry to bring us the new convention center. As far, and that's, I think, we have to be careful we don't just double out money. Now, we've got to work with them and support them and do whatever it takes to get it, but we, connect the culture. Very recent activity of getting these, forming art center here is wonderful. I mean, they're raising their own money, and they're going to have something really nice where we can track the industry and the head of some big company somewhere, his wife will come down here and won't have to go to Tulsa to see a ballet or an opera, whatever. But the point is that it's a public-private partnership, and that's the kind of thing that we need more of.
Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the presentation last week to the council on the tourism consultant we hired, and I'm all for a conference center. And I think councils should create a platform for private dollars to come to our community and develop a conference center. I don't think the city should be running the conference center, but I think we should create the platform for private investment to come to our town. And I'm all for drawing more people off I-44 that buy the community every day, to spend more dollars in our stores, in our convenience stores. I'm all for that. Thank you.
Mr..
I also attended that meeting last week, and I do like the idea of a conference center that has the ability to go ahead and house those volleyball and basketball games. I know, talking to a couple hotel managers here in town, that they were, they wouldn't be opposed to an increase in hotel tax if we were able to fill those rooms. And I believe a conference center hotels attachment would be ideal.
I think it's very important to realize that Joplin is a destination city. We attended a program that the Missouri Arts Council put on last week where they talked about the revenue that all of our arts of various sorts in this town bring into Joplin. The 2022 and the, I'm sorry, yeah, 2022 and the tourism went two different directions. I think it's very important that we do a conference center, and it's not a convention center like people are talking about because of the size that they're recommending. And I think that if we show that we can bring revenue in, and we've done that with the arts, that we should be able to do it with this as well.
Thanks, Judy. The proposal from the tourism study was to build a conference center using a 2% increase in lodging tax. The Lodging Association has reached out to us, and I think that, I think the candidates got that as well, that they would rather see us do an indoor sports facility, not a conference center, with that 2% increase. And so my thought is, I'd like to explore somewhat what Mr. Bard mentioned, was trying to find something that's a little bit more multi-use, where we might be able to host sporting events but also have that conference ability. Because I really don't want to give up a conference center in spite of an indoor sports facility, but I also don't know if we can get it approved without the Lodging Association's buy-in and approval. So I'd like to really explore what opportunities we might have to bring the two parties together and try to find some common ground there.
We're talking about the tourism study.
Thank you, Judy. I have for years thought that I-44 was a passageway for hundreds of buses on the way to Branson, and I've said there's some way, ought to have some way that we could draw them in to the city. Most of those agencies are looking for additional stops along the way for their people as they sell those trips and so forth. So I think it's good to be able to have something to pull them in. You know, I was, for years, I've thought the convention center was something that we needed, but after I listened to Vision 22, or 2022, and after I listened to the hoteliers who have done some intense study on this thing, I think that a sports center that can be used for small conferences but can be used for year-round sports things is something that we probably need to really take a look at. And I'm going to try, as a council person, to rely a little bit more on these groups that are putting times in for us to use their advice, follow their advice.
I support the idea of a conference center.
If we have to make it adaptable to athletic events to please the Lodging Association, okay. I'm not a big sports fan, but I have attended many, many, many conferences over the years, whether they were educational, church-related, professional. We need something that appeals to the attendees, that is high-tech, is adaptable, has a large meeting room but also small breakout rooms where people can have smaller meetings. And I think maybe if we do that, we'll bring people in who have money to spend. People who go to conferences usually have some disposable income. We need to try to get that disposable income spent here on tourism. That being said, I think we need to develop our historic downtown area, make it a tourist destination, maybe send the trolleys out and let them bring people in.
Thank you. For those who may have tuned in a little late, we do have a forum with the city council candidates for Joplin. We're taking turns answering the questions, each person having a minute. We're talking about tourism right now. Next question also deals a little with tourism. During the presentation, I noted that it was stated that some people they were talked to in doing the study had problems stating what they would tell someone if they were asked, why should I visit Joplin? So for you, as a candidate for city council, someone in the community who's been involved, what would you say to someone if they came up to you and said, why should I come to Joplin? I'm a tourist, why should I come there?
I wanted to know what the tourist is interested in so that I can tailor my answer. You know, obviously, Grand Falls is pretty, but not a whole lot of people really get excited about it. I think we're better off promoting the conference center, the sports arena. I think that's going to bring more people. I think the conference center. Whereas, we don't go to Springfield to go to a church conference. We don't go to Springfield for an American Legion conference. We come to Joplin, and they come to us. Joplin's a wonderful city. It's very interesting. People that are interested in historic things, people interested in mining history. We've got a lot to offer, but we need to know what the tourists are looking for when they come here.
Hutchinson, why should someone come to Joplin?
Well, yes, historic is very important. I recently joined the subcommittee of the Combination of Parks and Rec Historical, where we're going around inventorying all the cemeteries and all the important historical things that have happened to produce black form. But when you get right down to it, semi-pro baseball, no. But when you, the reason why that baseball team failed, the people want to follow their kids. They want to see youth sports, and that's why a youth sports facility is what would bring people here more than anything I can think of. And that's why JAC's been really great. It fills up these hotels. We make a lot of money in hotels, but the problem is the three months when it's too cold to be out there, and that's why we do need, and I think probably it is the way to get a good convention center now that it's gone and probably have 100,000 feet of space for exhibits and at the same time still have the gyms for volleyball, basketball, or what have you during those three cold months.
Thank you. Question dealing with someone where to ask you, why should I come to Joplin?
Well, I think we come to Joplin to see Joplin, downtown revitalization, Murphysburg, I think, connect the culture, and their project's going to bring people to town, and what Missouri Southern's going to do with the old library is going to bring people to town. And people come to Joplin because they want to spend money also. I think we have a vibrant mall and retail business in our community. And I know when I talk to my former customers in southeast Kansas, they come to Joplin because they can find the goods and services that they need that they can't find in their community, and that's why they come to Joplin. They come to Joplin to spend money.
Mr.. Bard, the question is, if someone asks you, why should I come to Joplin?
We're in the Ozarks. We have nature all around us, and we've got, once the connectivity has been completed in the city, I think that the connectivity would be a huge economic development right there as far as going from the nature center to Spiva, Murphysburg, all across the city just with those connectivities.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr.. Yuri, if someone asks you, why should I come to Joplin? I'm a tourist.
Because it's like home. We have, like I said, a huge art community. We have Pro Musica doing concerts that are world-class. We have Murphysburg that is historic and beautiful. We have the Downtown Joplin Alliance that is revitalizing downtown and putting in a new market. So there are a lot of reasons to come here besides just to shop at a mall that is fading out. So I think that the conference center would help. I think it being a combination, conference center and some sports activity, then that would fill the rest of our need.
Mr.. Stanley? So voter or tourist comes in and says, why should I visit Joplin?
Thanks, Judy. The, Joplin's an interesting community because I think our largest, our best asset is one that moves around a lot, and it's the people. So wherever Joplin people are gathering, that is where I want someone visiting this town to be because our people are engaging, we're welcoming, we're warm. So if it's a Third Thursday, if it's Empire Market, if it's bull riding in Memorial Hall, that is what sells and promotes.
that is what sells and promotes Joplin better than anything else. When you look at it on the map, there's really nothing that'll jump out at you when you're thinking about moving to this community. But once you come here and you get around the people, you start to realize that is our greatest asset. And after the tornado, we saw that in spades on how our people and our citizens responded. So that's what I would say. Where the people are, that's where you want to be.
Mr. Shaw, question, someone says, ask, "Why should I come to Joplin?"
Well, I love Ryan's comments, I think I agree with all that. But we also have to realize, this is where Bob Cummings was, this is where Chester was, this is where Route 66. And you know, you'd be surprised that Route 66 is still very much on people's minds, and people come through here. We have, we played down Joe Becker Stadium, but Mickey Mantle and a lot of the boys that he ran with played there and so forth. And these are things that people, that people still look in the books and remember and want to come and see. I think we need to wave those flags, and then when they get here, they're going to see how great the people are. But I think there's, I think we talked about the history. You know, Raiders Farm, a lot of people don't know anything about it, just south of Joplin was Raider Farm, where in the Civil War, a group was killed that came from Baxter Springs, were slaughtered, and that whole city out there was destroyed because they didn't stand up for the people. So we have a lot of things for people to come to Joplin to see.
Why should someone come to Joplin?
I think Connect the Culture has some great plans on the books, and that's going to bring people to Joplin, as well as the conference center and the historic downtown, Route 66, as Mr. Shaw mentioned. I think we need to play that up more. A lot of our surrounding communities are cashing in on that, and we haven't done it too much around here. But then there's something else, and that's our historic neighborhoods. The council has begun to focus and designate historic neighborhoods. Murphysburg, North Heights is coming up, East Joplin. Each of those neighborhoods has a distinctive personality and character that needs to be developed, not only for neighborhood cohesion, security, but something to show off. You know, the murals that are located throughout town. Let's do more of that and make these neighborhoods vibrant historic areas where people can tour and spend money.
Thank you. Thank you. Why should someone come to Joplin?
Judy, this is my favorite question you've asked all night, because I love Joplin, I love telling people about Joplin. You get on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram, I actually started a hashtag for it called #WJoplin, where I've been asking people around town, "What do you love about this place? Why did you choose here?" And the answers are always fascinating, whether it's sports, whether it's the arts, whether it's families close by, whether it's the cost of living. Everyone that I ask truly has reasons that they want to live here and that they choose to live here. I had a friend came down from Chicago last summer, and I was showing him downtown, and he lives in a high-rise in Chicago, and I took him around, took him to eat, took him for a drink. He said he felt right at home. It was, downtown Joplin for him was pretty much just like Chicago was, and he had a great time. Anything that a bigger city offers, we have the possibility, either we do offer it in some fashion, or we have the possibility of offering it to people. And I think it's just a tremendous place to live.
Thank you. Well, we're continuing our forum with questions, and we're going to shift a little bit now with Mr. Hutchinson answering this question to begin. People have mentioned a little bit of economic development. When you look to the future of Joplin, what do you see as future needs in Joplin for economic development, jobs or opportunities, any special type of, Joplin as a city as a partner in this effort? So you're...
Definitely. We need, that's the only way to make it happen, is we need to, and we've done a good job with going out and recruiting businesses, we need to continue that. You have to have quality of life here, though. I know I was told a few years ago before JAC, I think at the time the Chamber guy had a business all just locked up, ready to go, and it was just on a Friday, all signed, sealed, and delivered. And he called it back, what he did in the way that Tuesday he called, he said, "They're coming down from Connecticut," I believe, and he said, and he wouldn't take his call, and finally he got on the phone, he said, "Well, what's the..." He said, "Well, we changed our mind." And he said, "Why'd you change your mind?" He said, "Well, you don't know it, but I sent one of my vice presidents in over the weekend, he looked around, and your parks suck, so we're not bringing 500 new families in here." Well, since then, we have JAC. And that's why they connect the culture when they bring the, performing arts center is going to be so good, too. But we will probably, I don't know if we can pay the money that we did one time, I don't know, it was way up there, like a million a year, but we do have to have somebody, either if we're either going to continue the arrangement with the Chamber, or maybe we have to hire somebody. We do need somebody out there beating those bushes and selling this place and bringing the, small company, I'd love to see, I'd love to see us pick off the gun manufacturing companies in Connecticut, places like that where they're so abused. And I think we could have just the labor force that could really be good with them here.
Thank you.
Well, I'm a business guy, I'm well-connected with our existing industrial base, and what Harvey refers to, that's old history. Council's spent a tremendous amount of money upgrading our parks. The school board has spent a tremendous amount of money upgrading our schools, and that's what those people look at when they come, making an investment, building new plants, creating new jobs in our community. We have an excellent, and it's not full, but it's getting closer to being full, Crossroads Industrial Park. We have the Wildwood Ranch on the west side of town, which is rail-served, which a lot of those entities will be looking for, is bringing in commodities by rail and converting into jobs and to products. I've traveled on many of those trips with Mr. O'Brien, and I know what those people are looking for. They're looking for a solid, blue-collar-based community that they can hire people to fill the jobs that they create in our community. And there are certain skill levels that they're looking for. And I'm all for this, our vets get discharged from the service that we got started in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would love to see some more technical trade schools move into the area. It would not only create jobs, but it would also generate better opportunities for more manufacturers, or not just food manufacturers or dog food manufacturers, but different types of manufacturers to come into the area. Definitely the trade, we need more trade in the area.
Thank you. Mr. Urie, economic development, businesses.
I'm actually a graduate of Joplin's Franklin Tech School of Practical Nursing from 1970, and I would like to see more trade and vocational training available in our city. And with that, we can develop the skills that companies would need when they get here. And I think that our continued Joplin revitalization downtown, if we would use our historic buildings and get them to come in, find a building that they could already use by just restoring it, that that would be another asset for our city.
Thanks, Judy. Economic development through the efforts in the city and the partnership with the Chamber, I think, has proven to be very successful. We brought in quite a few new employers of great significance, and I believe our economic development challenges are regional, and I think our reach should be regional. The Advanced Training Center, I think, is going to be very beneficial for those technical jobs. But the city manager said one thing to me one time, and I agree with it, is that the best way to grow our economy for that economic development is supporting the businesses we have here now. And so I think we need to be very conscious and listen to our local employers to make sure that we are supporting them. And like what Mr. Glaze mentioned, that recruiting the military vets to come to the city, I think, is a great way to try to get a new workforce and rejuvenated workforce, because it's hard to get those jobs here, if they're, those people here, if they're not already here. So, thank you.
I agree with, I want to see us attract the vets, I think it's a wonderful, these people gave for their life for our country, and if we can do something to help them. We've spent a lot of time in the past working on development, economic development, bringing people in. I think one of the things that's important, and Ryan touched on it, is that we need to work with the people that are here and make sure that we're helping to bring the right workforce in so that they have the employees they need as well. You know, we can get to a point where we have more work and not enough workers, and I think we're almost to that point. But there's a lot of things in place with Missouri Southern, with the new medical school, with the growing medical center that we're coming, that we're going to, economic growth's going to be something that'll be part of our future, I think.
Your feelings about economic development in the city?
I recently had the opportunity to tour the Advanced Training Technology Center, and I was very, very impressed. My concern is that many of those people who are learning those advanced technological industrial skills will go elsewhere for jobs. So we need to be pushing that program when we contact business and industry to come into Joplin, say, "We have this highly-trained labor force here." And I think that center is going to continue to grow by leaps and bounds. It's, I can't say enough good things about that. We also, as Mr. Shaw said, we have a great medical community with a medical college and state-of-the-art hospitals. We have state-of-the-art schools now. And then the other thing is, I think Mr. Stanley said, support the businesses who are already here. And to me, supporting people who are willing to locate downtown, especially in some of these historic buildings, support them and make it easy for them to locate there.
Judy, I see economic development in two lenses. You have your larger employers, which you have to work to bring to town. I think we have an excellent relationship with our Chamber of Commerce that helps bring these employers that are bringing 200, 300, 500 jobs to town. I'm confident that that's going to work going forward. Where I think we can do, there's some room for us to really take the next step is with small business development. I don't know of any town in the region, or even in the four states, that has a strategic resource office to really kickstart small business development. There are plenty of people that I've talked to that have issues starting businesses in this area. I talked to one lady who didn't understand the amount of permits that would be required for her to open her business in the city, and instead she opened it just south of city limits. So if we can open some sort of resource office that can guide people through and allow them to get their businesses started in town, that's going to raise revenue and bring more jobs and keep them here.
I agree with Anthony on the need for smaller businesses. We're doing an excellent job on, in bringing larger factories or companies that hire multiple employees, but ultimately, you need a lot of the smaller businesses. And one of the things that he hit on is the fact that the process of getting construction permits, getting things approved, is difficult. An inspector will tell them, "You're good to go." They get started, and then the next inspector says, "Well, not so fast," and things start getting expensive. And just like Anthony said, people will build their business outside the city limits, so we lose that tax revenue and that opportunity. But in a positive sense, Joplin doesn't realize, I don't think, we really haven't embraced the fact that we have an excellent university, we have two excellent hospitals that should drive this city. We should be the number-one medical facility in the state, as far as I'm concerned, and we should appreciate Missouri Southern for what they bring.
Another question dealing with your role as a city council member. You are representing, some of you are representing zones, some are your general seats that you're seeking, but you are representing the citizens of the city. So elected to city council, how would you approach your, that responsibility of representing the people, the communication perhaps involved as a council member? You are the ears for the public and being able to share that with your peers on the council. So, Mr. Glaze, your feeling about a council member representing citizens in the community?
Well, I'll refer back to my past history on city council. I think I was a good councilman then, I'll be a good councilman in the future. I listen to citizens, I encourage input. My neighbors will tell you, I'm always asking them what they think about things that are coming forward to city council. I do solicit that information from citizens at random basis, too. I visit all the coffee groups on a regular basis, and I tell you, those people have an insight on what should be done in the city, maybe more so than the city council does. But I think I just bring a work history on city council that's been positive, and I think the citizens will reap those rewards that they vote for me on April 3rd. Thank you.
Transparency is definitely a large, a large value that I would like to bring to the council. You know, I've been in sales for about 25 years, and I think that listening is a huge value that we need to come to the council as far as that goes. That's, just listen.
Listen to the public, the constituents.
That's right. Just listen.
I think it's very important that our citizens realize and know that we are listening to them. And even in my campaign, every email, text message, phone call I get, I track exactly what the topic is, who called, and I get back to them when I find an answer. I think that's important, even as a council person, that we keep that communication, and that we share that information in the meetings as well. A lot of times, citizens will come and talk, or they'll contact a council person, and some of the council members are really good at getting back to them. But you never hear in a meeting a council person saying, "Well, I had 100 people call, and this was their thoughts on this topic." And I think that's very important, that they realize that they're being heard.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley, working with your constituents, the public you're representing.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. I have found through my experience on council that the citizens don't always expect me to agree with them on their approach to a subject, but they want to be heard, and so that's really the avenue I've taken. I welcome the emails, I welcome the phone calls, I welcome the engagement, and if we don't see eye to eye, I'll tell you where I think the issues are and why I don't necessarily see eye to eye with you. At the same time, though, everybody that I come in contact will be heard. I think there's value in the fact that I use my work number as my number in, because that's where I am most of the day, and I've got a staff there that takes those requests very seriously. I also think that it's important for the citizens to speak up. I think it's important for citizens to engage with us, because I, what I don't like is on Tuesday to get that phone call after we voted on Monday. And so I really would like to know your thoughts before we vote, as opposed than after.
Mr. Shaw, working with citizens.
Judy, recently I was in a meeting where the speaker talked about questions, and I think it's so important that as leaders that represent the people, that the people feel comfortable asking those questions. I mean, there's going to be times where we're going to make decisions that they don't understand that we're trying to represent our whole community and not just this group or this group, that we're elected to do what's best for the whole, for all of our citizens. And sometimes if they don't know why we make those decisions, if they'll just call and let us have an opportunity to visit with them. And I try to, like Mr. Stanley was talking about, I try to not let an evening come that I don't answer the emails or telephone calls that I get, and I think that's important for us to be able to really have the citizens' confidence, and I think that's one of the things that, as a council, we need to work on, is getting their confidence, answering their questions, and letting them know we do represent them.
I think accessibility is very important. I would like to be accessible to all the citizens of Joplin and assure them that I will address their questions and concerns and get back to them personally and not shove their questions off on a city employee or someone else, that I would personally answer their questions. And I would encourage them to express their concerns to me so that I can fairly represent the citizens of Joplin on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. I think the important thing is, when we're listening, to remember to listen with love. We're not just listening to hear and say, "Okay, I heard that," and then move on with whatever our agenda is. It's my job, if I'm elected, to represent you, the voters. So I have to listen and engage and be responsible for your thoughts and your opinions on how we should run our town together.
We need to be available, we need to listen, we need to answer, and we need to be proactive in seeking the citizens' input. It's been a few years now, I remember being in a restaurant, and it was campaign season, and I was with the little coffee group, and a person comes in handing out the little brochures and, "Hope I have your vote." And the consensus around the table was, "We'll never see that person again." And we didn't. We need to go where the people are. You know, that may be church, that may be something that Connect the Culture does, that may be the local coffee shop, but we need to be available and we need to be proactive in that.
Touching on what all these folks have said, I'm always 24/7. I have a website, I'd love you to go on it right now, it's called electharvey.com. I have a Facebook page, as Mr. Urie mentioned. Mr. Glaze mentioned earlier that he did a little inventory of the groups he was in. it came out to a dozen. When Hassan Stott asked for a list of all the organizations, I went through mine, it turned out they wouldn't fit on her form. I mean, a dozen of them, as a matter of fact. I'm here, there, everywhere, anywhere, and always available. And I encourage you to contact me 24/7. I actually work at night a lot of times, because a lot of international clients are on the other side of the world. And I will talk to anybody about anything, just like Mr. Glaze said, when he's got time for a problem with his neighbors. We just recently, in my neighborhood, the sign was built in 1999, termites got to it. Well, who do you think they all came to to get the sign fixed? So that's been my latest little project, as a matter of fact. And that's the kind of councilman I'll be. No matter where you are, what you are, you can reach me anytime for anything, and I'll give it everything I got, night and day, 24/7.
Thank you. Question dealing, excuse me, dealing with the role of city council. Politicians sometimes aren't seen in the brightest light when you see national and state politics, power relationship, and squabbling of different levels of government. How do you see, see the city council, how it should work as a functioning governmental body? You do have diversity on the council, you have different representations, different points of view. But going in as a council member, what do you see that it takes to have an effective city council?
I think that we all would need to work together, cohesively, not always agreeing with one another. I think a good, healthy disagreement can, can go further than just everyone agreeing all the time. But ultimately, coming out what's best for the community, that's...
Mr. Urie, looking at the role of council as a whole.
I think teamwork is the major concern. Nobody's going to always agree on everything or with everybody. But as long as you can work together, and as a group, and problem solve, I think those are the major achievements, is going in that direction.
Mr. Stanley, city council, what makes a council effective?
Thank you. When I ran for city council in 2014, one of my platform points was teamwork, because I was coming into a council that had been very, there were a lot of voting, perceived voting blocks, and people tied in together. So I think that, and I like the council I've been on for the last four years. I voted to be one of nine voices. And if we're all thinking the same way, then one of us is not thinking. So I would like to have a diverse council, where we come together and engage in open dialogue, listen to city staff, that gives us great information, that allows us to make educated decisions, and then vote, one person voting one vote, and not one person trying to vote three, four, or five votes. I'll never allow someone else to vote my vote, and I'll never ask someone to vote alongside me. Everybody needs to make their own decision, and I think that's when we make our best decisions.
I think it would have been fair if we'd have moved Ryan on the other side of it, because he always gets to pick the good comments before he gets them. But he's absolutely right. We rely a lot on our city staff, and they're the people that are trained to run our city, to do, be a city manager, be a finance. And I think as a council, it's our responsibility to listen to their input, and to take that information, and then listen to the will of the, of the citizens, and try to make those things meshed together to make our city what we all want it to be. We all want it to be a great place to live, and it is. We all want it. I think one of the things that's important, too, is that we used to do a little bit more of, the last council I worked with, I've enjoyed doing it, but I think we need to maybe have some time, where we spend a little more time together, as we know each other, then we know why we want to do, or why we feel the way we do. And it's important, I think, to do that in order to be a team, working together to move forward. Thank you.
What makes an effective council?
Well, diversity is important, teamwork is important, but I think there are a couple of other things that go along with this. First of all, I think that all council members should read their council agendas thoroughly before the meeting, and understand what the issues are, and be able to vote intelligently on those issues. And stand up for your opinions. Don't just agree with someone because you think, "Oh, that sounds good." Stand up for your opinions. And the other thing is to hold the city administrators accountable. If a question comes to us, we don't know the answer, we have to refer it to a department in the city, make sure that city administrator gets back to you in a timely manner. Give them a deadline, and say, "I need this by this date," and then we can bring it to council. Thank you.
City council effectiveness.
I think what makes city council work effectively together is a deep respect and admiration for the other people that, that sit next to you, that make the decisions that affect all of our lives. You have to have that, if you're upset with someone else, if there's hatred, then nothing's going to get accomplished. So first and foremost, everyone has to love and respect each other to get the job done, regardless of whether we disagree or agree on issues. After that, it's just taking the time to delve into everything really thoroughly, ask the questions that need to be asked, and ask the people, and then vote on it.
It's been my privilege to attend several council meetings, and I've observed that members of the council oftentimes don't agree with each other. And oftentimes, they'll, they'll vote, and there'll be no, no, then a bunch of yeses. But there, at the same time, there is a respect that they have for each other, a collegiality, where they demonstrate that respect, and ultimately, a trust. And that's critical. If the council members trust each other to represent their constituents and their interests, it's going to, we're going to do well. I don't think anybody currently on the council, or who wants to be on the council, is running for governor. And we take care of our people.
Mr. Stanley, the question was, first of all, of course, I would be one of nine. I would represent the people, I'd bring what I know to the group. And then we might fight, but at then, when the enemy comes, we'll grab a shovel and run them out of sight. But when it gets right down to it, we'll work together, respect each other's opinion. I think we need a certain amount of diversity and respect that. On the other hand, I'm going to stand up for my part as best I can, but when it's all over, I'll go along with the group.
Mr. Glaze.
Well, I think you have to refer to the charter. The charter clearly states that the councilman's supposed to come to the meeting clear-minded, listen to the facts, and then make a decision, not come with a predetermined vote. It's been my experience on council, too, that, yeah, we might have some disagreements, but there's never been any personal hard feelings, and we've always treated each other with respect. And I think that's what you need to expect from your councilmen when you elect them. But as far as reading the agenda, I've read every page ever given to me while I was on city councilman. I remember one agenda had 1,150 pages, and we were giving it to them, it was on Thursday night, and we voted on it Monday night, and I read every page. And I also learned, too, on council, you listen to the facts, you make your motion, you take a vote, and then you move forward, and don't hold any grudges.
So as you've seen, we've heard a variety of answers from each of the candidates here tonight, the questions asked for the voters, a chance for you to hear some of their opinions. I'm going to, as we close, the final thought, they're going to have a chance to leave a final thought, is, you know, why the voter should vote for you. We have nine candidates, good turnout for people seeking the positions, the general seats, the zone seats. So you have some decisions to be made at the polls. You have people coming in that have to make a decision on April 3rd. So for each of the candidates, your answer to a question of why someone should vote for you, you meet them on the street, you meet them in the coffee shop, wherever. What makes you perhaps different from someone else who's running for that same position? Why do you want their support? And so for this time, I'm going to do a little different, I'm going to start in the middle. So I'll start with Mr. Lawson, and then we'll work both directions.
I hope you'll vote for me, because you can trust me. And I am going to listen to you. I spent 25 years active duty in the Navy, and I was an officer prior enlisted. But I had to manage budgets, I had to convince the admiral to approve the budget, I had to manage facilities, I had to manage human resources, officers enlisted, civilians and volunteers. I have significant experience in making decisions. And I'm willing to say no when everybody else says yes. But at the same time, I'm not particularly eager to say no. I want what's best for Joplin. I love Joplin, it's my home. That's why I want to be here.
Mr. Hutchison.
That was my way. Well, I think I've covered it all at one time or another. I've sought the office before, I've served on the parks board since 2012, I've served on the Capitol Tax Board since 2014. I think in all that time, in the last seven or eight years, I've probably attended about 80% of the city council meetings, even though I didn't have to, I didn't belong to it. But some of these gentlemen, I don't know, will know, they've seen me sitting right out there. I intend to give it every possible thing I can get, 24/7. I'm number one on the ballot, I worked real hard to get that way, that means I ran around and ran up and down those hills to get the signatures, that's why I am number one. I want to be number one in your heart, I'll give you everything I possibly can. And as some of these previous things I mentioned, I'll make sure that we don't have another Wallace-Bajali here, we won't have a sanctuary city here, and nobody's going to let Ferguson happen here. Of course, the number one, I see Mr. West and other policemen sitting in the audience, that there's nothing more important than our police, and I salute their service. And you can look for me to do everything I can to straighten out that situation, where that the, as they go up the line, that the salary's are getting such that we're losing some of our, some of our finest. We want to keep them here.
Thank you.
Well, now that I'm retired, I got more time and effort to put in on city council, and I think I got a lot of time and effort in when I was on city council before. I'm a common sense guy, I'm approachable. I think your vote is well-placed, when you place it next to Glaze. Glaze is first on Zone 4, and I will emphasize, all citizens vote for zone positions. It's clearly marked on the ballot, there's a lot of confusion in the, in the city on that, but you all vote for zone positions. I'm very enthusiastic about this election, very enthusiastic about getting back on city council, and I would ask for your vote. Thank you.
I would ask for you to vote for me, I am third on the ballot. I believe that I will represent Joplin well, and everyone in the community. From my background being, I can see through the eyes of just about every citizen in this town. I have been in sales in this city for a very long time, and I would hope to have your vote.
Thank you.
I believe in servant leadership, that you're responsible to the people that you represent. And I promise to represent everybody in this city with all I have, with my experience, with my desire. And I have found this race exciting, it's been exciting talking to people, seeing what they would like to see happen in Joplin. And I would appreciate your vote, because we have a great city. We have great talent in this city, and I want to see that we promote it the way it should be promoted. Thank you.
Thanks Judy. I've thoroughly loved the last four years that I've served on council, and I'm looking forward to serving another four years on council. I think I do add a valuable voice as one of nine. We have many challenges that we're going to face, a lot of tough decisions that we're going to have to face, and you can count on to me to be engaged, ask tough questions, and listen to the answers, to do the homework, and not be afraid to speak my mind. I do think that a lot of our challenges are financial in nature, I think I can add value in that discussion. I think financial, complex issues are things I deal with on a daily basis, and I think I'm well-suited for that. And also have a big heart for, for the city and its citizens. I have been thankful to serve these four years, and I would ask for your vote on April 3rd.
Judy, I'm running unopposed, so if God doesn't call me home, I'll probably get elected. But I, and I don't say that out of pride, I say that with a great deal of humility, because I, I appreciate the people having confidence in me and putting me in that position, and allowing me to serve for 16 years. I don't have any agenda, I don't have any thinking I'm trying to promote. I think Joplin's a great place to live. I respect those men and women who have served on the council, and all the commissions and everything, in the years passed. And that's the reason I got on in the first place, and I just wanted to serve the community, it's a blessing to me. And I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
I love the city of Joplin. I've been here since 1952, except when I was working out of town or in grad school. My life has been one of community service through Habitat for Humanity. I've worked as a volunteer with foster children in Joplin and Springfield through Presbyterian Children's Homes and Services. Last year, my husband and I went through the Citizens Police Academy, and we are currently volunteer sentinels with the Joplin Police Department. So community service is my life. And now that I'm retired, I have an opportunity to devote a little bit more time to my love of community service. And I think also my educational and business background gives me a certain amount of validity for a council position. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. First, I'd just again like to say thank you to, like, everyone who showed up tonight, to everyone who took the time to sign the petitions to get us up here. You have to get 150 signatures to get on the ballot. The people that are up here tonight are here because the citizens of Joplin already decided that we're worth considering. As for me, my first priority is going to be to the safety of the citizens, if I'm elected, to get our budget issues squared away, and to get the fire paid correctly. When we train new firefighters here in town, if they leave inside of a year, year and a half, $10,000 in training money and salary walks out of our city. We got to get, when we fix our safety issues, it's going to go a long way to fixing our budget issues as well. I'm looking forward to the challenge to get that solved, and I ask for your vote on April 3rd.
And I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming this evening, getting together for this presentation. And I'd like to thank you for watching, whether you're watching on television or here in the council chambers. This is an opportunity for you to hear from the candidates, I know there will be others between now and the election as well. If you tuned in late to KGCS and said, "I wish I could have heard this program," it will repeat. So we're recording this on Monday, it'll be back on our station throughout the rest of this week, and even next Sunday night. It'll also be posted on our KGCS YouTube channel, so people who can't see the broadcast should be able to see it through YouTube. So I'd like to thank everyone for your participation, thank our students who are working behind the scenes, helping put this on the air for us, and remind everyone, April 3rd's election night, or election day, and make sure you vote that day, and make your decision to help the future of the city. I'm Judy Stiles, and thank you very much.